With each speaker being allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing is then closed and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. Items listed under consent, a portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the staff recommendation unless there is an individual present or a member of the commission that requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in the city government. Assisted listening devices are available for meetings in this location. To better serve you when possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance at 2-834-209, should special accommodations be required. Plan and zoning commission meetings are broadcast on media cable channel 7.1 or 7.2 for customers with that service. Transportation for the City of Des Moines meetings can be scheduled to and from Dart Central Station at 620 Cherry Street. Please call Dart on call scheduling at 2-838136 should you need transportation. Calls are accepted up until 5:00 PM of the day prior to the meeting. Please be sure to mention in your request that you require transportation for the City of Des Moines meetings at this location. This notice is intended to comply with accessibility requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And it looks like we have a quorum. Any action on our minutes of April 18th?
Moving.
Thank you. All those in favor approving the minutes of the meeting of April 18th, please signify by raising your hand.
Sorry. I can't. Sorry.
Okay. Any abstentions? All right. And were there any nays? All right. Seeing none. Our first consent item is a city-initiated request for vacation of North Alley, South, North-South Alley, right-of-way between Southeast 10th and Southeast 11th Street, from Scott Avenue to Shaw Street. And I believe there's a request in the audience that we move this item for a public hearing. Is that correct? Okay. We will do that. Our public hearing tonight is a request from Archway Development for review and approval of a site plan bartender's handshake under design guidelines MPC District for property located 3619 Ingersoll Avenue to allow renovation of a 936 square foot commercial tenet bay. I believe that the applicant, as my understanding, the applicant wishes to continue this item to, is it the next meeting?
Yes. May 6th.
Okay. And I do not see anyone else in the audience, so I'm assuming because the applicant's not here, he's assuming that's what we'll do.
Yeah. I talked with him this afternoon and they submitted a letter or an email requesting continuance.
All right. May I have action on moving that item to the May 6th? Wait a minute. You mean 16th meeting, right? May 16th meeting.
The May 16th, yes. That's right.
I'll move it.
Thank you. All those in favor of continuing item number two to our May 16th meeting, please signify by raising your hand. All right. Are there any objections? Seeing none. And there's, I don't think anyone in the audience had objected, so that item will be on our May 16th meeting. So we are now going to go back to our item number one. And Mike, did you want to introduce that?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator. The request for this evening was a city council initiated request to vacate an alley that exists between Southeast 10th, Southeast 11th, Scott Avenue and Shaw Street. The subject property, I've got a couple photos of the alley itself. It's not an improved alley currently. This is a view of a car that's parked on a portion of that. And then from the other end of that alley, so it's not traversable except for from one direction. The, in the staff report, you'll note that there was a reference to a parcel that needed access. You'll see this property right here is a parcel, it's owned by Polk County, that they need to maintain access for. So in the staff recommendation, we were recommending vacation of this paper alley, basically, subject to provision of access to that parcel. I'm available if you have any questions.
Questions for Mike? All right. So I understand that individuals present wish to speak to this issue. You want to step forward, state your name and address.
How would the alley be vacated too? It's deemed not of the purpose and then sell it to the.
I have a concern with the alleyway.
Do you mind stating your name and address?
My name is Sherri Brown. I live at 1003 Scott, next to the property of the people who wants to buy the alleyway.
You wanted to show us on the map?
Excuse me?
Can you point out which property you're on this?
Oh, on the map?
This map? This map? Are you on the east or the west side of the alley?
I'm on the west side.
West side?
I'm on the west side of the alleyway.
On Scott?
On Scott.
Right. You're later.
Yes. I'm on that side, the west side of the alleyway.
This is east?
Mm-hmm.
That's west. Is that your property?
Yeah, that's my property.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks. That puts a perspective for us.
Okay. The problem is, when they first moved in, we discussed the alleyway and that they had six vehicles and they wanted to park their cars. I use the alleyway to gain access to my driveway and we've been parking there for almost 40, 50 years, never had a problem. Now that they want to move in and put all the cars there, they asked if it was okay to use the alleyway and I said, no problem. Then later down the road, they said they wanted to purchase the alleyway. I said, well, what happens to my access to me being able to park my cars there? They said, well, we'll share it. And I said, well, that'd be fine, as long as you don't park before the sidewalk and leave that open so I can get in and out. Well, they currently have lots of people come in, park their vehicle there. I either have to wait or I have to go over and tell them, please move your car. So it's already been a problem. I kind of looked into maybe putting access in my yard for an alleyway because of this issue coming up. And for me to do it, it's like $2,200, which is a cost I can't afford. So at this point, I'm kind of in a pickle wondering, what am I going to do? Because if they do get the alleyway, that takes my access away. And like I said, I've had this property, it's been in my family's, it's over 115 years old. We've never had a problem with the issue as far as parking. I don't mind the neighbors being there, I don't mind the cars. They've kind of had problems where their vehicles have hung over in the driveway. I still am not able to get into the driveway. It's just been a reoccurring issue ever since they have moved in. And I'm kind of like, well, if they do get access to this alleyway, it puts me in a jam as far as I have to take and put in a, cut the curb out, put it in the driveway, up to the sidewalk so I can get into my yard, which I've never had to do before. So that's kind of where I stand at it right now. And not only that, we've maintained that alleyway. I moved in there in 2005. City has never, ever cut the grass. Grass has grown two to three feet. They've had a tree there and numerous branches fallen. I've always picked it up, I've always cleaned the alleyway, I've always taken care of it. So I've never had a problem with the alleyway itself. It's just been a public alleyway for all people in that neighborhood. I had a neighbor that lived behind me and I actually used to use my vehicle and go help her clean her yard up and all that. And I don't have a problem with any of that, it's just my access to my driveway right now. I would hope that maybe if they want this alleyway bad enough, that they would help me with my situation with my driveway. So it's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you for sharing. Questions from commission? All right. Seeing none. I don't know, Mike, do you want, is there anything you can address among those concerns?
Well, I think in the staff report, we were initially concerned about the access to the Polk County property. It's really only accessible from one direction, so I would assume that the easement that would be retained over the alley could just be for general public access and not for a specific property owner, but you could, the council could then convey the property to someone subject to an easement on the property. Typically residential alleys are conveyed one half to each adjoining residential property owner. In this instance, since we have to maintain an access along there, I guess it'd be up to the council on whether or not they wanted to convey it to one property owner subject to an easement or two separate owners and maintain easements over both parcels. It would be up to the council. So I think just a motion to vacate subject to provision of an access easement would be sufficient. Commission's role is to determine whether this is needed for a public access purpose and not necessarily who the property is conveyed to.
Okay. Did you understand what he's suggesting? Okay.
Mike, can I ask a couple questions?
Sure.
Maybe that'll help, but I don't know. So you're saying that we could just convey the, as long as we have the access provided, things would be okay. What's the difference between having the easement and the public access? Like, what are we doing if we're requiring access?
If we vacate the property and convey it, we no longer, the city no longer is obligated to own or maintain that alley in any shape or form. Conveying it, they would just retain it with an easement over the property to allow access. So it could be specific for a particular owner, because we can't eliminate access to a property. It could be for the benefit of that property and save the adjoining property here. We could be specific in the easement or it could be a general, just basically public access easement on that.
And why does the alley on their side have a fence across it? Is that just, it does not connect?
Yeah, we have numerous alleys that are, people have either put fences across or, you know, their grass, tree, overgrown areas that have never had a paved surface on them. And so in this instance, that issue would be resolved because it would no longer be any kind of public right-of-way and the fence could stay there.
Thanks.
So Mike, so if we allow or agree to a conveyance, does it immediately then go to, sorry, does it go to an owner or to a property owner? Does it go into a limbo until someone buys it?
So the normal procedure for residential alleys is that one half is offered to each adjoining property owner. And that's managed by our right-of-way division. Phil Wagaman handles that conveyance process. Residential alleys, it's normally just a minimal amount. It's usually a couple hundred dollars or less. It's basically publishing a notice and in the paper and paying for that notice to be published. It's not like a commercial alley where we sell it based on square footage going to each adjoining property owner or that. So anyway, the council has a policy on conveyance. It's generally one half to each adjoining property owner unless they determine to vary from that policy. But the conveyance is council's decision. Planning commission is just deciding whether or not this is needed for a public access purpose. They've noted they need it for a driveway. Polk County has noted they need it for access to their property. That can be resolved by either leaving it as public right-of-way or getting rid of it as public right-of-way and conveying it with an easement on the property. And we would recommend conveying it with an easement on the property.
Could you tell, pardon me, could you tell us if the city actually maintains this alley?
We, yeah. It's a very minimal maintenance policy on residential alleys. And we have numerous ones across town that are quite honestly overgrown. They're not traversable and there's not currently access on them. So we have a very minimal maintenance policy and this would essentially clarify, it's not our responsibility to maintain it.
So can you show us, Mike, the owner at 1013 Scott? Is that the one that's just adjacent to the east? With the building that abuts the alleyway?
So my understanding is this is Scott Avenue on this drawing? This would be the house that's on the east side of Scott Avenue?
Yeah.
This would be the people who just spoke's house on this property? And this would be an example of a car being parked in the middle of the alley, blocking access?
Right. So back to the overhead?
That's right here.
Yeah. And it's a small frontage on Scott, it looks like. So then it would have this, it would be conveyed by the city, this long orange piece, which is a full block in length and however wide it is?
Yeah. And the easement technically would only have to come from one direction as long as there's turnaround. Otherwise, we could just leave the whole thing subject to an easement. Of course, there's that fence that's there right now. So my suggestion would be that the easement come down to the Polk County property and essentially stop at that point.
Mike, what is the impetus for this vacation?
City council initiated the request. This adjoining property owner was not able to get all of the signatures of adjoining property owners along the alley for the request. And so they went to the city council and said, we can't get all those signatures. Would you initiate the action? And council did. So it's before you tonight at the request of council.
The staff report reads that the property owner at 1013 Scott wants to put a driveway, I assume where that alley is, and gain access to a garage, for new garage in the back of the building.
So they could pave that, but they'd have to put a, they'd have to allow people to drive over it to get to the Polk County property and to their driveway.
So if this person paved, if this person bought the entire alley and paved a driveway, they would have, and we require that there be a vehicular easement of a certain width, this property owner to be required to keep that open at all times?
Yes.
In order to allow this neighbor to use that new paved driveway to gain access to her backyard? I fear what's going to happen is they're going to just park cars there, because that's what they're doing now. So how does this solve that?
Solve that? One of two things. The easement would be enforceable, but it would take, it'd be a private matter between the two property owners on the access easement. The, if one half was conveyed to each adjoining property owner, they'd have to work together on the driveway construction or limit their driveway to just half of the, half of the width. It's 16 feet wide, so, you know, eight feet.
They could put eight feet on their half of the alley, former alley, if these people didn't want to participate.
Hey, Mr. Simonson, what's the customary width for a residential driveway?
More than eight feet.
Say the minimum is probably nine. Nine is typically a minimum. Most are 10 or more.
10 feet for a single car garage. But, you know, presumably they're backing out, they're going to drive down this alley, turn into a garage and have to back out. And boy, that's not very much pavement. So they'd have to put more pavement in their own backyard in order to make that movement work.
I wonder if the best scenario, Mike, is to not do the easement and just make it clear that both parties know that it's being conveyed and they have an option to buy half and they can do with it what they want. I just think it'd be a nightmare trying to manage one person owning all of it and there's an easement that you can't use the city to help you enforce. And I just think that would be a nightmare.
Well, we certainly need an easement period because Polk County needs access to that parcel to the south regardless of whether these two.
And that easement would come from Scott or from Shaw?
We'd recommend it come from Scott based on the current grade of the property through there.
So there's going to be one anyway. I doubt the neighbor on the right's going to want this once they understand all this.
Now, I'm nervous about granting or vacating an alley when people who use it for access are opposed.
I am too, as a matter of fact. If I lived where this woman lives and has lived there for a long time and suddenly a neighbor wants to use that as a driveway and it didn't look from the picture that we saw that it's very usable as a driveway, because I don't know if it was your car or their car or somebody else's car, but after living in a place for a long time and using a public right-of-way for access for my car to drive it into the back of the property and then suddenly to find out that the city council has said, we're going to sell this or vacated, I'd be pretty much upset.
But that's what the easement's all about.
Why can't it just be public access and just stay that way? Then everyone can just continue to drive on it?
It could be obtained or retained by an easement instead of it being public right-of-way. Be a public access easement on the property if we want.
Okay.
Again, the real issue on an easement isn't, is whether that, I guess, takes away value of the property, use of the property. It limits the use of the property. These residential alleys are being conveyed for a fraction, I mean, $100 or less or $200 or less. This isn't really an issue of like a commercial property where someone's paying thousands of dollars for this right-of-way access and then they're also granting an easement over it. They're getting the property for a fraction nominal amount and the easement really isn't destroying any value.
But, go ahead.
Mike, do you know what the Polk County use is?
That's what I was going to ask.
Why is it buried way back in the back?
From the area, it looks like it's a vacant parcel back there. I don't know what they have on that property. We just got a comment from them that they needed to maintain access to it.
It says it's the real estate office.
That's who contacted us and said they needed to maintain access to it.
Okay. So that's not necessarily.
They did not specify what it is.
It's a warhead.
I'd like to make a motion if we close, is the public hearing closed?
I'll close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion that we deny the request. And is it, I guess I should ask for a second, I want to make a comment too.
Yes. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay.
And if council should, I'd just like to make a comment and see where this goes. If council wishes to vacate this alley, I think the vehicular access should run the entire length of the alley and be the full width of 16 feet. And I say that because I fear that, you know, if, if this person, if the person seeking the alley wants to buy eight feet, they can pave eight feet. That's wider than, hardly wider than the sidewalk. And they've demonstrated that they keep their car parked there. So assuming that doesn't improve, we're not helping this neighbor. So at least if the easement is 16 feet wide, then they have the right to call the city and say their access is blocked and the city toes the car. So somehow people need to be protected. But I also understand the city doesn't want these, I call them abandoned alleys, alleys that aren't even passable. They have trees in them. So.
The staff assumption is the entire 16 feet of width is covered by an easement?
Yeah.
It's whether it's one ownership or two ownership for that easement?
When I bought an alley one time and I had to put an easement on it and it wasn't 16 feet, the city required that I put a, it was either 10 or 12 feet, it was an odd number. So I'm just saying, I don't know, or this board might decide, okay, we'll grant, we'll grant this vacation, but in any event, I'm saying it needs to be a 16-foot easement. I'm recommending denial and see what happens.
If I may just clarify what we will do with council. You want 16 feet paved access, is that correct?
No. 16, I don't think, if the neighbor buys the alley, I don't think we can force them to pave the full 16 feet, but I think the vehicular, there needs to be a 16-foot on vehicular easement. Otherwise, the neighbor could put a fence. If it's eight feet, there's nothing to prevent the neighbor from putting a fence right down the middle.
Thank you.
But, so do we need to add that though to the motion? Because basically the motion, as I hear it, you're just denying staff recommendation. So.
So depending upon what happens, if the denial motion is approved, then I will write the resolution for council stating what your vote is and that it was to deny. And that in the event council decides to approve, then this is what the PNC would recommend.
Okay. Any comments or concerns about, okay. So the motion is denial of the staff recommendation for easements of any existing utilities and easement for access to the Polk County-owned parcel from the adjoining public street network. That's it. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, raising your hand. Another group.
I'm bored.
Okay. All those stating nay, please raise your hand.
And I know we don't need to explain our vote, but I think the, I think the staff recommendation would include a 16-foot easement through this whole property if conveyed, so.
And that's why I, so I think staff recommendation was fine, so that's why I approved.
Okay. Thank you. But the motion does carry to deny the easement. However, it does go to the city council and you just heard council say that, our legal council say that the resolution will read that the recommendation of planning and zoning is denied, but that does not mean the council will follow the recommendation. So it might be appropriate for you to find out when the council will hear this issue and go forward. All right. Thank you.
May I make two comments? One, I just think it's odd when someone who wants to purchase this isn't at this meeting. I know they're not initiating it at city council, but I just think it's odd that they're not here.
Yeah, I don't like it.
And two, you're a perfect neighbor because you're kind and you go and knock on their door and say, I really want to get access to my backyard where I park my car. You have the legal right to call the city and say this vehicle's blocking a public way because it is a public way. Yeah.
All right. Thanks. Any other comments? All right. That concludes our public hearings for tonight. Is there, is there anybody who's going to do a staff report? No?
Yes. Staff report, we need to discuss the item that was in front of your, this was a tentative schedule.
Oh, yes, that's right. So we all have a schedule of our site co-plan schedule.
So we have some new commissioners on the commission recently and some that have been on here for quite a while. As you recall, we adopted our comprehensive plan, Plan DSM, in 2016. And one of the major items that was in that plan was to develop a new zoning ordinance. It's obviously been a goal to have a new zoning ordinance for a number of years. Our last comprehensive rewrite was done in 1965. And so we have been working on a new code. As part of the comprehensive plan, the council did approve funding to hire a consultant to work on the code. We hired Duncan Associates out of Chicago and Coda Metrics out of Evanston to work on the code. They came up with a draft about two years ago that we took out for public comment in late summer, early fall. At that time, there was quite a bit of public comment that we received. We received, I want to say around 350 public comments and staff comments on that draft. It took an extraordinary amount of time and effort on staff's part to go through each of those comments and look at the code and see if there were compromises that we could recommend or amendments we could suggest to that code. We also had. It took an extraordinary amount of time and effort on staff's part to go through each of those comments, and look at the code, and see if there were compromises that we could recommend, or amendments we could suggest to that code. We also had some individual meetings with council members to address individual concerns that they had expressed about the code as well. On this schedule, you'll see that on May 1st, which was yesterday, we delivered our staff revisions to the consultant, and we are expecting to have a, receive a formatted draft from them next week on the code. And we would like to proceed to public processing of that code, and hopefully have the code adopted by the end of the year. So on this list, this is not an all-inclusive list. I want to, this does not preclude other boards and commissions, such as the Park and Rec Board, or the Urban Design Review Board, from receiving presentations on this. It was really the bare-bones minimum of trying to get a code through a public hearing process. One of the comments we heard two years ago was, "Well, this is too fast. This is, you know, there's not enough time." I want to point out that we're here in April, and we're looking at an effective date in October, if we follow the schedule exactly. There's six months of public comment and public hearings and discussion about this draft of the code. So I feel like there's ample opportunity for people to have public input throughout this process. What I wanted to really discuss with the commission this evening was, if we get that draft back, which is expected next week, by the seventeenth or the twentieth of this month, we want to have that posted on the city's website, our Plan DSM website, along with this schedule. We are also seeking some comment from council on this schedule as well, so there could be some tweaks. It is listed as tentative, but if we move forward with this, I had plugged in two workshops of the Plan and Zoning Commission to review the draft before you hold a public hearing, and I'd like to have those in June. I simply place those on the nights where we have already regularly scheduled Plan and Zoning Commission meetings. A half-hour session before the regular meeting is not sufficient to get through this code in two meetings. I'd like to divide it up and take the zoning chapter 134 at one workshop, and come back with the site plan chapter at the next workshop. Again, I, the purpose is not to read through every single section of the code, and thumbs up or thumbs down of it. We're going to give an overview of the code, general provisions that are in that, how it works, and there may be some overlap, because you need to understand how the two chapters work together. But the primary focus of one meeting would be to try and get through the chapter 134, and then the second would be the chapter 135.
And Mike, you feel that can be done in a half hour at each meeting?
I'm not, I do not suggest it can be done in a half hour. What I would like to find out from the commission is, would you be willing to either start your workshop earlier on the day of your regular Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, or would you prefer to schedule the workshop for a separate day from your Plan and Zoning Commission meeting? Right now in this schedule, it's showing you'd have it sometime the day of your, of your normal P&amp;Z meeting. I would propose maybe starting at, say, four, go through it, we can, can work on, I mean, some pizza delivered or something to give you something before your meeting. I can't guarantee what will be on those agendas of those dates, so...
Probably not.
You know, if it's like tonight, could work out great. Maybe we work a little bit more on the code itself afterwards. Otherwise, you know, we've had a couple of meetings in the last month or so that have gone quite lengthy, and it could be a very long day. So I wanted, I'm glad there's at least eleven of you here tonight, because I think we can get a pretty good handle on what the commission would prefer from the eleven of you.
And I just want to ask, so an alternative to scheduling a meeting at four o'clock via two Planning and Zoning Commission meetings would be one long session, like on a Friday or something like that? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, it's really up to you. We had just planned it for purposes of this. In the past, when we did the comp plan, we did kind of some early, longer early sessions before planning commission, so I tried to follow that format. And then, as you'll see, on weeks where there's not a planning commission meeting, we're also going to be meeting with the steering committee that council appointed to be reviewing this code as well. So, again, that's following the format that we utilized for the, for the comp plan was, off Plan and Zoning Commission weeks, our staff was meeting with the steering committee. Planning Commission weeks, we were meeting with you. So, in the month of June, at a minimum, there's two Plan and Zoning Commission workshops, and two steering committee workshops proposed. And then, we would propose that the planning commission hold a public hearing. You only have one meeting in July, be July 18th, and then I'm not, we won't be asking you to make a recommendation that night. You'd be able to take public comment, and then come back the first meeting of August, and then we would be asking for a recommendation at that meeting. Again, that's similar to what we did with the comp plan. We gave people the opportunity to comment, you to think about those comments, and then come back two weeks later with questions, or actually making a recommendation. I guess the only thing I would say, and maybe Greg, you can comment on this as a longstanding member of the commission, and also a member of the steering committee, but I'm confident that the draft of the code is functional, that it works, and that it's a better structure and better process, and better predictor for neighbors, developers, citizens than our current code is. I will not stand up there and tell you the code is perfect. No code is. Our existing code is broken. And in my opinion, sooner we can get to a new code that has a better process, and is better organized, and can better be communicated, then we can start working on making revisions to a new code, and make it better and better, just like we have with our existing code. It's been, our existing code's been amended three hundred and some times over fifty years. There will be amendments to the new code also. I have no doubt about that in my mind. So if we're waiting for perfect, it's never going to happen. It just is not going to happen with a zoning code. Times change, elected officials change, community values change. The code will change. But for right now, I think we have a draft that you'll see that is functional, and I believe that it is a fair compromise between neighborhood interests, developer interests, and, and value for the city. So with that, I'll take any questions you have.
So was the question on June 6th and 20th, what time would we like to meet?
If those dates are acceptable, and then what time?
I love the four o'clock one versus another night, but it's up to you guys. Let's just bang it.
I agree with that. Come early and be done with it.
Okay.
And Mike, to add to Mike's, it's time we got this code. I mean, we, I've been on the commission since 2002, and we worked on a code clear back in the aughts that didn't go anywhere. We got to a certain point, we worked on assigned ordinance, we worked on all kinds of stuff. We've worked on this one. It's time we do this. It might not be perfect, but it's way more perfect than the thing we've got, and so we just need to start using it, and so if this process can do that, we need to do it. And again, I reiterate, we should, it's a lot easier for me if we just come the same day and come a little early. If somebody has to come late, so be it. At least it's, we don't have to make two trips or whatever, and we're just done. You know, that might be a problem for Jackie or those, but there's three in charge that you can have somebody else start the meeting if we have to, and that's what I...
It's not a problem for me, but do we have to have a, have a workshop? I don't believe in...
So do we have a most, do we have a most... I will be gone yet.
You're gone at six?
I'm, yeah, I'm flying out that day, so...
Okay, but you'll be here for the, the twentieth?
The twentieth, I'll be here, yeah. So...
Two summers.
Feel free.
So, four o'clock on both those days? Sound okay?
Is four o'clock early enough, or I'll leave it up to you?
Okay with it?
Four?
I'd say the four o'clock would be fine. We'll know if it's enough time for the next one, and amend it if we have to.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so should we just go with four o'clock on both of those days?
Okay, I appreciate...
And I realize that you're pending city council.
Yeah, yeah, this is just, again, we think this is acceptable. It follows the general tenets we were given, so just wanted to make sure that I was addressing your, your needs for when we were meeting and the time allowed.
All right. Any other business?
Nope, thank you.
Any commission business? Singing, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Oops, sorry.
All right.
Start with me, Tom.
Yes, probably.
Okay.
Probably good.
Already there.
I'm sure.
Yeah.